Good morning. I call to order this regular scheduled meeting of the Lake Havasu City Plan and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, April 3rd. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Henigan, please call the roll.
Commissioner Matthew Mitchell. Commissioner Susanna Ballard. Commissioner Joan DeZerro.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Laird.
Here.
Commissioner Tiffany Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Lonnie Stevenson.
Here.
Commissioner J.P. Thornton.
Here.
Commissioner Jim Harris.
Here.
Vice Chair Gabrielle Medley.
Here.
Chair David Diaz.
Here.
Thank you. Seeing that we need one alternate member, I'm going to ask Mr. Thornton to please come up and take your place on the dais. Let me know when you're signed in, please, and we'll continue the meeting. Mr. Gilbert, any announcements? Announcements? Yeah.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, we do have some. Not a whole lot has happened since the last meeting. There was just one minor item before council, so nothing really to report that council has done with the stuff that's been before you previously since last meeting. However, coming up into the future, I want to go over some items there. We have our first major general plan amendment in a long time coming forward. That's in the process right now. You all should have received information on that. Under state law, we're following all the notification procedures. There's a lot of agencies, a lot of organizations involved, including you all. And the timeframes involved really pushed the hearings on this out. So we're looking at the hearings, the two required public hearings, the planning commission being in June and July on that, with a city council hearing in August, and that's for a high-density residential to resort mainland general plan amendment on Bahama Avenue for a major resort development. So there'll be more on that to come in the future. This is just the beginning stages. Second item is it's been really busy the last couple of months, a lot of cases, and the next couple of months can be really busy as well. It just so happened as a scheduling quirk that it appears that there's not going to be any cases for May 1st. Just the way the case noticing falls, it just happens that that's going to be vacant. So you guys will not have a meeting on May 1st. However, expect start coming back on the 15th. It's going to be for two months. There's going to be a lot of stuff going on. So that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioners, we all received the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any deletions, corrections, or comments on the minutes? If not, looking for a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Commissioner Harris.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner DeZerro. Any further discussion on the minutes? All right, seeing none, we're ready to vote.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to this process. City staff will present each item. There will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and the applicant will have an opportunity to present their case to the commission. Once that is done, we will open a public hearing to give community members an opportunity to ask questions or provide input. I ask that anyone who wishes to speak limit their trips to the microphone to once per item and keep comments to less than five minutes. Please stay on point and refrain from discussing subject matter not pertinent to the item being considered. There will be an opportunity for the public to address the commission about other choices, topics later in the meeting. After public commentary and testimony is taken, I will close the public hearing and bring the item back to the table for city staff's recommendation. Further discussion amongst the commission and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove the item. Thank you for adhering to this protocol. All right, today's first item is ID number 244203, request for approval of a preliminary subdivision plat for the M on the park at 130 Park Avenue, tract 2360, block 1, partial B, creating a 65-unit condominium subdivision for an existing development in the island's Body Beach IB district. Mr. Kearns, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is located on Park Avenue between Highway 95 and Rotary Park Drive. The property to the north is Zone Island Body Beach District and developed with a hotel. The properties to the east are Zone Limited Commercial C1 District and are a mixture of developed and undeveloped lots. The property to the south and west is Zone Public Lands and Facilities District and is Lake Havasu City's Rotary Park. The site is currently being developed into a multifamily project with one retail space. The proposed condominium plot will allow the units to be individually owned, and they will be part of an association along with the common portions of the development. The project includes 65 residential units, a commercial retail space, and the remaining areas will be controlled by the recorded CCNRs. Partial A is an easement for ingress egress, maintenance and operation of utilities, sewage, drainage, refuse collection, and emergency vehicles. The project will have an owners' association to manage and maintain the association improvements. Partial A will be privately owned, and the water and wastewater within the subdivision will be installed and maintained by the association. This concludes staff's presentation. All right, I have a couple of other slides here. This is the building on the east side of the development. That's over this section. And this is the west end of the building, and that'll be over this section over here. The applicant is also present for any available questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. The commission have any questions for staff on this item? Anybody? Commissioner DeZerro?
I have a question that mainly it's on the record is that I, when was this project first approved to be built? Was it 20?
This project was submitted in August of 2022, and it was approved by Planning and Zoning Design Review in August or May of 2023.
Okay, so it was approved. It didn't come before us and didn't come before council. Okay, that's what I was thinking. We didn't wear. My biggest concern is the fact that we were not, this was not mentioned when we approved the retail business with apartments. And the big concern that everybody's had, including us and council, was traffic. So I think we did put in a traffic requirement. I just want to, on the record, that that, because I know people are going to be concerned about hearing a 65 condominium with 130 cars coming on that street. There is the traffic study on the previous, not this project, but the previous one that they have to do, and they will be told that this is part of that street. Am I correct?
The project across the street for the planned development, with that rezone, it was said that it will have a traffic analysis during design review. It'll be reviewed by Public Works Engineering Division.
Okay.
And they would be required to do any improvements that they need to for that project.
Okay, for that one.
As required by the traffic analysis.
Okay, so is the traffic study just going to be for the front of their business and not the whole?
The traffic analysis will analyze their property and then will take into effect the other traffic flows.
Through that U Street of Park.
Yes. This development was rezoned in 2018 for Island Body Beach, which allows this multifamily project. So that's why this hasn't been seen by you guys.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to make sure that it's on the record about the traffic because that was such an important issue with that new one, and we didn't know this. I had no idea this was even in the works when we were talking about that one. So I just, it will be looked at from a traffic standpoint with all the things that have been approved in that area then.
For that.
For that, when that project comes forward for design review. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So when it was rezoned in 2018 from commercial, was it C1 to IB, Island Body Beach?
It was C1 PD back in 1993. Nothing ever happened because of the restrictions of that PD, so that's why it was rezoned to Island Body Beach in 2018 to be.
And who requested that? I mean, why did we rezone? How did that get on the radar to rezone it?
I'm not sure. From what I've heard is that the area was, the PD was too restrictive, so that's why it went undeveloped. So they rezoned it to regular C1 and Island Body Beach to bring in development, which it has.
So when the current construction began now, which has, there's like garages there and there's a couple of elevator shafts, it's been, it's been like non-construction going on for almost a year now, I believe. It's just been sitting there. When that construction began, it did not have to come in front of us because it met the zoning of this Island Body Beach. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may add, in the, in the use table and development code, this particular use for multifamily residential is a permitted use in Island Body Beach. And so because of that, it would not have to go before any review bodies unless they needed exceptions. What normally happens is a development comes in and they can't make it 100% work with the base code requirements. So they have to put a PD on top, and so that's why you see a lot of planned developments come before you because they have to get exceptions or allowances that they wouldn't otherwise have. This particular project didn't need any of those, and so it proceeded just as a regular site plan review process for permitted use. And what they're doing now, the reason it has to come before a public body is they've decided that they're going to place ownership lines around walls and things like that. Condominiumizing it doesn't change any of the criteria of the development whatsoever other than creates ownership rights. And the applicant can explain to you why that's necessary, why they decided to go this route at this time with a partially built project.
And what we're doing today, would this, then they have to go to the city council for final approval? Is that correct?
Well, they typically go on the consent agenda.
Okay, just want to double check that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any more questions by the Commissioners on this item? Commissioner Wilson?
Did we not take away, like this fell under the timeline? We were removing plats from our approval because as long as it met staff guidelines, then they no longer needed to come to us, correct? And this was just at a timeframe that fell under that radar of that approval?
Correct. They submitted prior to the effective date of that change.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more? All right, seeing none, is the applicant, oh, Mr. Tineman?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I did want to clarify one thing, that the final plat will not go to city council because they'll, if this gets approved today, they will come back and submit another application for a final plat that'll be after March 27th, which was when the effect went into where these are reviewed at a staff level. So this will not go to council for the final plat.
Okay, so today is the final.
Today is a preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat.
So usually, the way the code read was preliminary plats came to commission for recommendation of approval, and then when we got a final plat, that went to city council.
Okay.
So this is a preliminary plat, so they still have to go through the final plat process, but that'll be done at a staff level due to the code change. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
No, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, as a final note on that, there is one last preliminary plat that'll be coming to you because they filed prior to March 27th. So there'll be one more plat coming before, there will all be staff review going forward, and that's up in the foothills. You'll be seeing that. We don't know exactly when, but that's coming the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present? And if he'd like to address the commission, please state your first and last name and spell your last name for the record.
Lee Johnson, J.O.H.N.S.O.N. Morning Commissioners. Staff did good presentation and explained the project. I'm here to see if you guys have any technical questions on the project that I might be able to answer for you guys.
Any questions from Commissioners?
All right, thanks Commissioners. You guys have a wonderful day.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Kearns, your recommendation, please.
Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of land use action 24-4203, preliminary subdivision plat for the M on the park at 130 Park Avenue, tract 2360, block 1, parcel B, creating a 65-unit condominium subdivision for a new development in the Island Body Beach District.
All right, do we need a motion to? I'm sorry. You're right. Public, anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Please state your first and last name and spell your last name for the record.
Thank you. I thought you forgot us. Emiliano Torres, T is in Tom, O-R-R-E-S. Just one question, is there only one access? I'm concerned with emergency access to the development. That's my only question.
Yes, it is showing the main access is on Park Avenue.
Okay.
My question was an answer, is there only one access?
Yes, only one access on Park Avenue.
Yep. Anyone else from the public like to address the commission on this item? Please state your first and last names, spell your last name for the record.
Bonnie Toy, T-O-Y. First name's actually spelled B-O-N-Y, not I-E. The question is that when you were presenting the maps and everything, the one with the pink map that shows the undeveloped, you said that all the properties around there were undeveloped. I forget if you, exactly what you said, but they're not technically undeveloped, they are in developing. They are being developed right now.
Yes, I said it was a mix of developed and undeveloped properties.
So when they consider the traffic for that, are they going to be considering the whole developments that are going in?
A traffic study would, would consider the surrounding zones and what could possibly go in there and what is there?
Okay, because obviously the traffic is definitely going to be changing and completely. You have medical, you have restaurants, you have the hotel, you have the whole aquatic center, and the park on the backside of it just seems.
Yeah, a traffic study should take all that into account.
Okay, and it's not undeveloped, it's being developed.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to address the commission on this item? Anyone? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. We've already got staff's recommendation, a little out of turn there, but thank you. Are there any questions, comments from the commission? Ms. Wilson?
I just want to confirm, or Trevor, can you confirm? It appears on the map that there's actually two accesses on Park. Can you confirm that?
Yeah, sorry about that. So the main access is this one above ground. This is an underground parking garage in here, so that'll only be access to the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? All right, seeing none, we're looking for a motion to either approve or disapprove. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve ID 244203 with the request of approval to move forward the preliminary plat.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Wilson, second by Mr. Harris. Any further comments?
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, good luck to you. All right, the next item is a request for a rezone of 7,000, ID number 244206, it's a request for a rezone for 7,000 Chenoweth Drive, APN 120-03-027, a 10-acre meets and bounds parcel from AP Agricultural Preservation District to L1, Light Industrial District. Mr. Gilbert, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get started with the staff report, the applicant is present online, so we're going to have to bring him in remotely for this particular case. Again, this is a 10-acre property. The area map here shows where it's generally located, and this area, which I'll get to, is highly, is highly industrial. There's a lot of storage yards, a lot of both indoor and outdoor storage. And the city dump on the east side of the screen is just off the, off the map to the east. So this is a very isolated area. And advancing to the zoning, it's presently zoned AP Agricultural Preservation, which is a holding category when land is annexed into the city. And that's what, this is still the original zoning that was applied to this whole area when it was all brought in. There's only a few pieces of the AP left that haven't been designated yet, even though some of it's been used in a grandfathered manner for a lot of years to the north. But all the orange you see, whether it's crosshatched or just plain orange, is light industrial. The gray is industrial. So this entire part of the city is industrial area. The underlying general, general plan land use category is employment. So it's all consistent with this type of use. Advance this one more slide here. Oops, no, sorry. Chenoweth is along the south, and it curves away as it goes toward the dump, and there, the applicant proposes a industrial development there, which initially is going to be, include storage units. Nothing's finalized yet, so it's important to point out that the city has, has made changes to the zones where storage units are allowed, and a lot, a lot of the commercial districts, it has been removed from them. And in fact, you'll see in the next item today that there's another special zone where it's being removed. That's a commercial district. So storage facilities are only, if that gets approved, only the council will be allowed in I and LI, which this is an I and LI area. So that's all I have to present on this. Does the planning commission have any questions for me?
Anyone from the planning commission have questions? Or is the applicant present on the Zoom call?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Do you have, you want to make a presentation, make any comments to the commission on this item?
No, my name is Russell Skuse, S-K-U-S-E. On behalf of the applicant, and we concur with staff recommendations.
All right, thank you. Hold on, we have a question from Commissioner DeZerro.
Good morning. I was wanting to ask, I noticed that you did a Zoom meeting for this, and I wanted to know, Victoria Farms is not far from there where the people were looking at, you know, did you get into the Victoria Farms? I know it's, I think it's like 350 feet, but I don't know there's anything behind you. I just wondered who was invited to the Zoom meeting on this project?
We were provided addresses for all the required individuals from staff, and so mailers went out. We did hold the meeting. The only people that showed up were actually the property owner and her agent and myself.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? All right, thank you very much. All right, anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Anyone? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment. And Mr. Gilbert, your recommendation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on the findings, staff does recommend forwarding a recommendation of approval to the city council for land use action 24-4206, a rezone of 7,000 Chenoweth Drive, 10-acre meets and bounds parcel from Agricultural Preservation AP District to Light Industrial LI District.
Okay, thank you. Any Commissioners have any questions, comments on this, looking for a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harris.
I'd like to move that we approve ID 244206 with staff's recommendations.
We motioned by Mr. Harris to approve, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion?
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, good luck to you.
Thank you very much for your time today.
You're welcome. The next item is ID number 24-4205, a request to amend city code title 14, zoning development code, section 14.03.02, table 3-1, to remove self-storage, mini-storage as a permitted use in the mixed-use general MU-G district and section 14.04.07 to clarify exterior material types permitted on buildings in commercial zoning districts. Mr. Gilbert, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These two items, the first item that's up on the screen came direct from the mayor's office to staff to bring this forward. The second item was before you a few months ago as a discussion item that went to council as a discussion item, and they gave staff direction to bring it back. And so this is the return of that to address council's desire on what they wanted to see happen with commercial exterior building design. So I'm going to focus on the first item, the permitted use table. The MUG zone is the only non-industrial zone where storage units are, as of right now, still allowed. And the 700 London Bridge project that came before you a couple of months ago had a small storage component in it. And when that went before the city council, there was some concern that storage units were still allowed in that district, and so the staff was requested to bring that forward to make that change. As far as the prevalence of MUG, the largest piece of MUG that was left in the city at the time was 700 London Bridge. There's only about five pieces roughly around the city, smaller pieces that are still potentially open to storage units in MUG. There's a couple in the foothills, there's a couple in the Riviera that, well, there's two in the Riviera, part of a larger piece because they're connected. And then I think there's one or two piece along US 95, but that's the extent of it. It's a very small zone, it's almost extinct, but as 700 London Bridge showed, there are, there is still available land in that category. So the request was to have that removed, and that's why we're here today on that. And the important thing to point out is that if this gets approved by council, light industrial, industrial will be the only remaining categories where self-storage, mini-storage will be permitted in the future. Second item, site and building design standards. The council's direction at the discussion item was to remove the restrictions on exterior materials because it was so specific, which is the line out in the first sentence. And then when we went through the different types of corrugated metal that could be allowed on buildings, they did not want the full metal building design. So they, but the other ones, they were okay with. So what we came back with is, is the sentence at the bottom that's underlying to be added to the code, corrugated metal siding is permitted on structures in commercial zones, but at least 30% of any building facade facing a public street excluding alleys shall include alternate materials such as adobe, brick, or stone in the design. And what that will, what that will allow to happen is either a wainscote under the windows or a partial facade, and I have an example actually right here. This, this particular building is about a 50%, if you include the roof facade part, about a 50% alternate material. And this is what's intended. So with the 30% street-facing requirement, they could do this, they could do columns of brick, stone, stucco, or wood, or other material. And that's another thing to point out in this, in the way the text is worded. The stricken part in the first sentence was, was in the sentence with shall be, and then with limited by these types of materials. In the added section, the corrugated metal siding is permitted with 30% of it shall include alternate materials such as. So that leaves it open to modern methods that might come into play in the next few years that we don't even know about yet as, as that 30%. So it's not as restrictive as it was before, and it allows a little more leeway to bring unique materials into play. And of course, staff would review that, make sure that it meets the intent that council directed us with. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have on this. I'll answer any questions.
Yeah, and I think this falls in line to what we had discussed at the previous zoning meeting. Yeah, and I think this falls in line to what we had discussed at the previous zoning meeting. As I mentioned at the city council, I mean, this language is in line with what we were talking about. Any other comments? Commissioner Wilson?
Were the few parcels that are left with this MUG zoning given notice that this use would be removed from?
That is something, that is something that can be done, not only a notice, but if the commission wants to recommend a, like a 60- or 90-day window before it takes effect so that the owners of those parcels can have the opportunity to at least consider that that's changing and take necessary action, that's something that we could do.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, back when that was considered to be removed, we did have members or owners, representatives of those properties that specifically asked that they not be removed. And my question is, why the push right now to take those out? Because there were planned plans for those particular properties and they were specifically asked to not be removed at that time. And that was before your time, during a different commission. But I don't see the need to go ahead and do that at this point.
The belief is that with the council, that hearing that was held on 700 London Bridge was, there was a lot of public comment taken and there was a lot of opinions voiced from the public and from the individual council members regarding the having storage units in the MUG. There was a lot of unhappiness with that. And that's why, following that meeting, the mayor's office asked staff to move forward with an amendment to.
As I recall, I'm sorry, as I recall, the most concern was in the commercial districts. You know, like as you come into town on both ends, the mixed-use area kind of got thrown in with that. And at that time, the commission decided that that really wasn't necessary. So, and I'm not seeing the need for it right now myself.
The ordinance was originally proposed that removed C2 and a couple of other zones, I think South Gate. MUG was originally in that and it was removed, that is correct. And I forget the year that that ordinance was passed, but, oh, Jeff's here. He may have some more information.
Couple of years ago. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to point out that the storage units were removed a couple of years ago from the commercial district. And you're correct, MUG was left in that. The concern at that time was that all our commercial properties were being eaten up by storage unit and some, most of these properties were kind of like gateways into the city and whatnot. So you are correct, there was, I believe, a storage unit complex planned and I want to say it was London Bridge Road. And that's why that kind of stuck in there. And then London Bridge Road came before you because they needed some amendments to that actual category. If you remember, like that whole 700 London Bridge Road could have been developed with storage units without coming forward to a public hearing. So the thought behind this is to, I just want to point out that if it is removed, it doesn't mean that storage units still can't go there. They can come to the commission, they can come to the council and ask for a planned development to allow storage units. And they can still do that on C2 or any property where it's just not a permitted use. So the idea here is to remove it from this category so it's just not a permitted use. And if an individual wants to do that, that they have to come through the public hearing process. That's the idea here, is to keep it basically in line with all our other commercial zoning districts, except for light industrial and industrial zones. So I just wanted to point out that we're not saying that they can't do it, but they have to come forward through a planned development process, public hearing process, to allow those storage units in this zoning district or any zoning district that doesn't allow them at this time.
My concern is, from a property owner's perspective, you know, they bought that property, they've held on to that property under the expectation that they could probably do something like this. And to go ahead and just arbitrarily remove it, there needs to be some sort of a grace period of warning process because it takes a long time to put together a project like this with regards to, you know, planning, architectural, engineering, et cetera. It doesn't just happen overnight.
Understood. And thus, as Mr. Gilbert suggested, when these were removed from the C2 category and some other ones, we did give a grace period of 90 days, which gave the owners of those properties the ability to pull together a site plan and submit for a design review application prior to, like a 90, I believe it was 90 days. And they could submit their application, and as long as they submit their application prior to that 90 days, then they were vested from that design review process. So they would go through the design review process, comments from staff, et cetera. And once it was approved, that design review is good for, I believe, one year from the date it's approved. So there is some flexibility there to, I guess, protect those people if they actually had a plan to do that at this time. That's the process that was in place last time.
Were those property owners notified by staff, by the city?
We did not reach out to anyone. I mean, that's why we have, when we have public hearings, we do notices. And that's, I mean, that's not part of the city's process or the notification process that's required by state law. So we have to notify people within 300 feet, publish it in the newspaper. If, you know, we don't, that's not part of our process. If we had to do that, then we would have to do it with every application we would bring forward. We follow what's in our development code and what state statute requires as far as notifications go.
I would suggest that if we do go forward with this, seeing as it's such a small amount of properties left, that we maybe kick that notice time up to maybe 180 days, something like that. Give them time to start the process if necessary.
All right. I do remember that meeting that Mr. Harris was talking about when he was the chair of this thing. And we talked about the entrances of the city, just north and the south entrances of the city to, for sight visual and so forth like that. So any other comments by the commissioners? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, generally with these situations, the public hearing notice that's published is the only notice that's given when the text amendment to change the use table or any other part of the development code happens. But because in this particular case where there's so few properties we could look at, maybe when, if this gets approved, to send an individual reminder notice to the few owners to say, hey, this is changing, you have this many months to decide if you want to include storage units in your development plan and to take action, otherwise you have to do it.
And we could include that in any motion that's made to, you know, that language. All right, is any other comments from the commissioners? If not, I'm going to open up to the public. Anyone from the public like to address the commission on this item? Anyone? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the staff for your recommendation. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends forwarding a recommendation of approval to the City Council for Land Use Action 24-4205, minor amendments to Lake Haves City Development Code to remove self-storage as an allowable use category in the mixed-use general MUG district and to modify exterior material requirements for commercial buildings.
Thank you. Any further comments from the commissioners and/or a motion? Commissioner Wilson?
I motion to approve ID 244205, the request to amend the City Code Title 14 with the addition of 180-day notice to all of the MUG zoning properties left. I don't know if anything else.
Notice by staff.
Notice by staff, please.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wilson with the additional language and a second by Commissioner Lehrer to approve. Any further discussion?
I do have some questions on clarification. You're going to have to clarify that, exactly what you mean.
All right, let's clean up that language then. Mr. Tunaman?
Are you, do you want notification? Or are you requesting that you're recommending 180-day grace period before this goes into effect?
Both, please. Both the 180-day grace, well, no. So we would be delaying the change for 180 days, but also giving notice to those few properties that this 180 days is.
Okay, so, go ahead.
So I'm going to suggest that you let that motion and that second die and then try again. And then make sure you state exactly what it is that you want to do.
So the way that I'm understanding it is that you want staff to notify all property owners of MUG within the 180 days that it will go into effect after, if it's approved by council, to allow 180-day grace period, basically, and to contact those property owners within that 180 days to let them know the change.
Okay, so we're going to table that motion, right?
You're just going to let it fail. So vote on it and let it fail.
Okay, let's take a vote on that motion then, not further discussion, and then we will readdress it. Ready to vote?
And that motion fails, zero to seven.
Go ahead.
Okay, Ms. Wilson?
Okay, so I motion to approve the ID 244205 with the addition of giving 180-day grace period to the code for this change to go into effect and also recommend that staff contact anybody with the MUG zoning properties to give notification.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Wilson. We have a second.
I'll second.
And second by Ms. Lehrer. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we are ready to vote.
That motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, that's the last item on our agenda, so now I'm going to open up for a call to the public.
Do we need to vote on the second development code text amendment? Since I don't think that was included in that motion? Okay.
Can I repeat that?
It's the intent, yes. I mean, I don't know if you intended to leave out. Can you?
So I think the way it was read was doing the development code with the addition based on the MUG, but not necessarily. I don't think we addressed the additions for the metal buildings.
I guess I was under the impression that it's including the entire ID that it included the material change.
Okay.
I don't think anybody intended.
To leave it out.
To leave out any of this, the section 140407 clarifying.
That was included in our vote.
Okay, I just wanted to verify.
Included in our vote. Thank you, Ms. Henigan. All right, this is the call to the public. It is an opportunity for the public to address the commission about a topic that is not on today's agenda. We are unable to respond directly or have a two-way conversation. If you would like to speak, please approach the podium and spell your last name for the record. Does anyone from the public like to address us right now? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to staff for future meetings, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next meeting is going to be on April 17th. And there is a single item that is scheduled for that meeting. And that is Villas Estates subdivision up in the foothills, PD amendment hearing. So the plat will be coming later as well for that down the road. But this is just for the minor change to development.
What is that one for, again?
It's a PD amendment to the Villas Estates subdivision up in the foothills.
Thank you.
It's already included in the total count for the 697, for the foothills develop overall.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gilbert. All right, that's the end of our business and I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.